I now invite Mayor-elect Josh Morgan to give the traditional land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodinashoni, Leni-Pewak, and Atawandron. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the Two-Roe Whampum Belt Treaty of the Hodinashoni Confederacy, Silver Covenant Chain, the Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Hodinashoni-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Whampum of the Anishnaabik and Hodinashoni. This land continues to be home to diverse indigenous peoples: First Nations, Métis, and Inuit, whom we recognize as contemporary stewards of the land and vital contributors to society. We hold all that is in this natural world in our highest esteem and give honor to the wonderment of all things within creation. We bring our minds together as one to share good words, thoughts, feelings, and sincerely send them out to each other and all parts of creation. We are grateful for the natural gifts in our world, and we encourage everyone to be faithful to the natural laws of creation. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. This land acknowledgement is a first step towards reconciliation. It is the work of all citizens to step forward towards decolonizing practices and bringing our awareness into action. We encourage everyone to be informed about the traditional lands, treaties, history, and cultures of the indigenous people local to their region. And to the chiefs who are watching or join us here today, I want to make my personal commitment to meaningful and sincere dialogue and collaboration between us as we work towards the betterment of all peoples who live in this region. Thank you.
I now invite the Grade XI Vocal Class from the Vocal Program at Catholic Central High School to come to the stage and lead the singing of the National Anthem. The choir members are Rea Finch, Aidan Leach, Jude Lubos, Sophie Nathan, Luciana Sabagall, and Gwyneth Tomeray. Thank you very much. We acknowledge with thanks the communications received from federal members of parliament noted on the council agenda, and we acknowledge with thanks the communications received from the members of the provincial parliament noted on the council agenda. I now invite the mayor-elect to the podium to express appreciation to community and government representatives in attendance. I would like to call upon Ariel Kayabaga, Member of Parliament for London West, to come to the podium and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to join you tonight to deliver greetings on behalf of the federal government as we welcome our new city council. I'd like to start by congratulating the newly-elected mayor Josh Morgan, as well as all new city councillors who will take their seat for the first time in the chambers of London City Council. I would also like to welcome back councillors that have been re-elected by their constituents to serve another term. The fifteen of you have been given the opportunity to make London the best it can be, and I look forward to seeing what direction you take, and I am excited for the opportunities of collaboration as we continue to address the most pressing issues for Londoners. The importance of collaboration between every level of government, federal, provincial, and municipal, cannot be underscored. The best way for us to deliver for the city we all love is to work together. Although I recognize that we have different responsibilities and jurisdictions, our governments have many avenues in which we can bring our efforts together to build a healthy, a greener, and more prosperous city of London. So on behalf of our federal government, I wish each and every one of you incoming councillors, Mayor Morgan, my heartfelt wishes, and a term full of success for all Londoners. Merci et bonne soirée.
Thank you. And now I would like to invite the mayor-elect to the podium.
I make everybody nervous when I bring a glass of water to the podium, and I do have a number of thank-yous and acknowledgements to go through. And as always, the person who gets assigned to do the thank-yous and acknowledgements of people and organizations in attendance will in no doubt miss someone, so we will do our best, but we will also acknowledge all those who I may have missed today. So let me start by a warm thank you to Ariel Kayabaga, MP for London West, for attending tonight and bringing greetings. Thanks to Gillian Ferguson, who is representing Karen Vecchio, MP for Elgin Middlesex London. And thank you to Nadine Abirad, who is representing Lindsay Matheson, MP for London Vanshaw. And I believe I also saw Ryan Gosse in the audience, who I'm sure is representing MP Peter Fragescatos. I would like to acknowledge the three past London mayors who were attending this evening: Mayor Ed Holder, Mayor Matt Brown, and Mayor Joe Fontana. Maureen Cassidy, Miriam Hamou, Jessie Helmer, and Stephen Turner are here as well. As you know, they served in the immediate past council, and we thank you immensely for being here tonight. Our meeting is graced by the presence of community and religious leaders tonight, and I wish to recognize representatives from Metropolitan United, St. Peter's Basilica, the Islamic Centre of South Western Ontario, the Islamic School, the London Sikh Society, the Muslim Resource Centre for Social Supports and Integration, and the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahis of London. Thank you so much for being here this evening, all of you. Many thanks also to the presidents of QP 101, QP 107, and the London Police Association for coming this evening. We're certainly glad that you're here with us. London's boards and commissions are well represented here tonight. We thank and welcome the leadership of the Argyle Business Improvement Area, the Covent Garden Market, Elden House, Hamilton Road BIA, Housing Development Corporation, Hyde Park BIA, Kettle Creek Conservation Authority, London Chamber of Commerce, London Downtown Business Association, London Economic Development Corporation, London Middlesex Community Housing, London Middlesex Health Unit, London Police Service, London Public Library, Middlesex London Emergency Medical Services, Museum London, Old East Village BIA, RBC Place London—I think they kind of had to be here—Tourism London, and the Western Fair Association. And again, I'm sure I have missed a number of organizations who may not have RSVP'd for us to see, but we thank all of those organizations and partners who are here today. I want to say the London Community Recovery Network is here tonight as well, represented by the Black London Network, the Employment Sector Council, London Arts Council, London Development Institute, London Environmental Network, London Health Sciences Centre, London Regional Manufacturing Council, London Small Business Centre, St. Joseph's Healthcare London, Tech Alliance, and the United Way of Elgin Middlesex. Thank you to them, not just for being here tonight, but for all of the work through our recovery efforts through the pandemic. I would also like to recognize and acknowledge members of the city's senior leadership team and the many staff members that are in attendance this evening. Many thanks for what you do every day to serve the citizens of London, and I look forward to continuing our important work ahead. Let me also recognize the Shine the Light campaign and Shine the Light on Women's Abuse. This campaign—and as you may have noticed, everything is themed purple tonight—runs through the entire month of November. This day is actually the Wear Purple Day. I'm even wearing my purple socks. Max, thank you very much. Max buys me fancy socks, so he'll appreciate that I'm wearing my purple ones today. As you can see around us, many people are wearing articles of purple. Our flowers are purple, and we've tried as best as possible to illuminate today in purple in support of this really important campaign. And we're really pleased tonight to be joined by the lead under Jennifer Dunn, the Executive Director of the London Youth Movement Centre, and also Jessie Roger, the Executive Director of Inova, and Tim Smock of the Changing Ways. Thanks to you and all of your teams for everything you do to make London a safe place for women and girls. And with that, thank you. I also, on my walk-in, would be remiss—and this is where I will miss people—this council's here today. Harold Esher, who was sitting right in the front row, I see Tutton. I'm sure there are a number of others that I missed, but we certainly appreciate the support of all those who have served in elected office, who have returned tonight to celebrate with the new council. Thank you very much as well. And with that, I apologize for anyone I've missed, but we certainly appreciate everybody who's come out tonight to support us in this exciting endeavor. Thank you.
At this time, I will be asking each member of council-elect to come forward one at a time to take their declaration of office, and I will begin with Mayor-elect Josh Morgan.
I require a lot of instruction, Michael. I, Josh Morgan, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received nor will receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any manner that is—or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with even the Sull of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I introduce Mayor Josh Morgan.
I, Hadley McAllister, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 1, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true, knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I introduce councillor McAllister. Shaun Lewis.
I, Shaun Lewis, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 2, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I introduce councillor Lewis. Peter Cuddy.
I, Peter Michael Cuddy, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 3, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce councillor Cuddy. Gerry Privil. Susan Stevenson. Ward 1.
I, Susan Stevenson, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 4, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce councillor Stevenson. Now Gerry Privil.
I, Gerry Privil, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 5, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under the oath. So help me God.
May I introduce councillor Privil. Sam Tresso.
I, Samuel Tresso, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 6, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I introduce councillor Tresso. Corinne Ramon.
Thank you. I, Corinne Ramon, have been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 7, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect if I made it under oath. Thank you.
May I introduce councillor Ramon. Steve Lehman.
I, Steve Lehman, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 8, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce councillor Lehman. Anna Hopkins.
I, Anna Hopkins, having been elected to the office of councillor, Ward 9, in the municipality of the City of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, and that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God. Thank you. as if made under oath. So help me God. Thank you.
May I introduce councillor Hopkins. Paul Van Mirbergen.
I, Paul Van Mirbergen, having been elected to the office of councillor Ward Ten in the municipality of the city of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased corrupt or in any other improper manner. That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III. And that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce councillor Van Mirbergen. Skylar Frank.
I, Skylar Frank, having been elected to the office of councillor Ward Eleven in the municipality of the city of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased corrupt or in any other improper manner. That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. That I will bear faithful or I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III. And that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
May I introduce to you councillor Frank. Elizabeth Palloza.
I, Elizabeth Palloza, having been elected to the office of councillor Ward Twelve in the municipality of the city of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased or corrupt or any other improper manner. That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III. And that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce to you councillor Palloza. David Ferrera.
I, David Ferrera, have been elected to the office of councillor Ward Thirteen in the municipality of the city of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office to my best of my knowledge and ability. That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased corrupt or in any other improper manner. That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III. And that I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce to you councillor Ferrera. Steve Hillier.
I, Steve Hillier, having been elected to the office of councillor Ward Fourteen in the municipality of the city of London, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of the office in a biased corrupt or any other improper manner. That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And that I will be faithful to bear true allegiance to His Majesty King Charles III. And that I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing that it's true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath. So help me God.
May I introduce to you councillor Hillier. Distinguished guests, may I present to you your 2022 to 2026 municipal council.
Now I invite Anne Bigelow to invest the mayor's chain of office. Anne Bigelow retired from a faculty position in management and organizational studies at Western University. As a CPA and MPA, she worked for many years in the public sector, including municipal and provincial governments. She has a unique perspective on London's municipal council as the daughter of its first female mayor, the late Jane Bigelow.
Thank you. Wow. I was not expecting this to be quite as quite what it is. But anyways, fifty years ago, my mother Jane Bigelow became the first woman mayor of London. She was forty-four at the time, and I was fourteen, the same ages as Josh and his daughter Ainsley, I believe. I feel honored to have been asked fifty years later to say a few words at the swearing-in of London's sixty-fifth mayor, Josh Morgan. Being the daughter of London's first woman mayor was a life-changing experience. On the day after my mother became mayor, we went grocery shopping with the media at the market. And they asked her really insightful questions such as, "How do you manage to feed your children when you're so busy?" Her answer was that "It's amazing what you can do with frozen spaghetti sauce." And I can tell you, I've eaten a lot of frozen spaghetti sauce. But this isn't about my mom. It's about Josh. And it's about all these people who have taken on this incredible task of running our great city. Some of you are new to the role, and some are experienced. And Londoners are grateful for you because you have taken the time from your families and from your careers to do something really important that doesn't receive a whole lot of thanks. So before you get into your term, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for taking those calls during your family dinners and explaining why the garbage hasn't been picked up yet. Thank you for being willing to be recognized whenever you go out for dinner with your family and for kindly saying a few words to your fans. Thank you for reading the newspaper and letters to the editor and for being able to take praise well and criticism bravely. It is possible for you to do good work and to feel good and a lot of satisfaction from the work that you are going to do. You will never please everyone, but it is possible to please most of the people most of the time. You are all impressive people. You've put your name on a ballot. You've taken a risk. You've found voters who were willing to support you. Every vote counts. You must be willing to listen to everyone who wants a moment of your time. You must take every issue seriously, and you must do your homework. Thank you for taking on this challenge. I've known Josh for many years. We both worked on the fourth floor of the Social Science Building at Western and worked together in the local government program for several years. Josh has the right background for this job, having been on council for eight years and with a few years of experience as deputy mayor. Josh was particularly helpful to my brother and I when we asked the city to name a portion of the Thames Valley Parkway after my mother. Josh wants to lead the city into a future based on a strong moral and ethical compass. He wants to set a good example for his kids and build a city based on a long-term vision. I think my mother approached the job in a similar way, and I still have people tell me she was a fantastic mayor. The issues were different in the nineteen seventies, but they were just as complicated and difficult to find good solutions to. Many of them involved improving access to City Hall for women and other groups who were disadvantaged. My mom had to convince her male colleagues that women could be building inspectors by arguing that she was perfectly capable of doing the job herself. Before that, it specified on the job description that you had to be a man. Josh, I hope you are successful at this job and enjoy it as much as Jane did. And I hope that fifty years from now, your children are being approached by people who remember the service you provided to this city in a positive light. Let's proceed with doing this investiture thing.
Thank you, Anne Bigelow, for your attendance here today to invest the chain of office and for your thoughtful remarks. I would like to now offer a few words about the ceremonial mace. The mace is an ornamented staff made of silver and represents the authority and power of London's municipal council. The mace is carried by the sergeant-at-arms, who leads the mayor's procession into council chambers at the commencement of each council meeting. The mace rests on a stand immediately in front of the mayor's seat in council chambers. And when council is in session, the mace is raised by the sergeant-at-arms to the highest position on the stand. When council is adjourned to recess, the mace is lowered. The mace is then removed from council chambers when council is not in session. I would now like to invite the sergeant-at-arms to come to center stage and raise the mace. I would now invite the mayor to call the meeting to order.
The first meeting of the 2022 to 2026 municipal council is called to order.
And at this point, I would like to invite the mayor to bring forward his inaugural address.
I'll say I just borrowed a pen from the clerk, and the clerk had an extra one. Always prepared. I want to first start off with something that isn't in my speech. And that's something that I think each and every one of us would have noticed when we took the oath of office, looking out into the crowd. And that's our families and loved ones. I know my family's in the front row. You can tell some of them are making a lot of noise, distracting my colleagues as they take their oath of office. But families and loved ones are what allows us to do the work that we do. They're the backbone and support that give us the time, the opportunity, and the strength to serve in public office. And I think each and every one of us onstage would like to give our loved ones a round of applause for supporting us today. Let me start by saying, what an honor and what a privilege. I say that on behalf of myself and members of this new city council. What an honor and what a privilege. An occasion such as this lends itself to reflection. As we reflect on those who guide us and inspired us along the way, we think about the weeks and the months and the countless numbers of hours we spent campaigning, the conversations we had with Londoners about the future of our city and how best we could create lasting and meaningful change. Colleagues, on a night such as this, you should feel equal measures of pride and humility. You might also feel a sense of pressure, pressure about expectations and pressure about the surrounding and mounting work ahead. Let me say this, that pressure, that pressure is a privilege. Pressure exists for this group only by virtue of the opportunity that that pressure represents, an immense opportunity to do extraordinary things, the opportunity of our lives to improve the lives of all Londoners. We, as a council, must embrace the pressure, and we must deliver. We are a group of fifteen individuals, fifteen Londoners of various ages, races, religions, genders, sexualities, political ideologies. We come from different parts of the city, different parts of the country, different parts of the world. These differences are our strengths. They are to be embraced and celebrated. Yet for all of these differences, I truly believe that there is more that unites this council than divides it. And that's not empty political rhetoric either. Instead, that's a belief based entirely on the issues which informed our respective campaigns, the issues that we heard at the door, the issues that each of us were elected on in good faith to address: affordable housing, mental health addictions, state of our downtown, climate change, inclusivity, and safe neighborhoods. While campaigns can be divisive and contentious, every single person elected to this council campaigned on these issues. We were elected based on these shared priorities. And it's exceptionally rare, in any political contest, that there is near unanimous agreement on the issues. Where we will differ is on the solutions. But that's what excites me most about this council. We will be dealing with issues, not insults. There is widespread agreement on the issues, and our task, our responsibility, and our collective challenge is to determine the most effective solutions. The work that lies ahead of us should be focused on how, not the what. That is not an insignificant distinction. It's not always been that way with previous councils. Now, what each of us may agree on what the issues are, the solutions are not straightforward. They're not easy. They're multi-layered, and they are complex. It brings me to an example I want to give. I had the privilege of giving a speech at the announcement for Joan's Place, our exciting project that Y O U is putting on to provide thirty-nine affordable units to young mothers who don't have a place. Thirty-nine units with wraparound services supports specifically geared towards those young mothers to provide them a safe nurturing environment to raise their children. young mothers to provide them a safe nurturing environment to raise their children, somewhere they can afford, somewhere they can be safe, somewhere where they can get the services and supports they need. And those wraparound service supports are incredibly different than the wraparound service supports that would be needed for a 50-year-old man with some mental health challenges. The issues of homelessness, the challenges of mental health and addiction, they are incredibly complex, and they will not be solved by a simple one-answer, one-line, one-motion solution. It will require an incredible collaboration of community partners, collaboration with an organization like Y O U, a subject matter in supporting youth, and now young moms. And there are many other partners that we will need to collaborate with, and that is the path ahead. That is the path that we need to find. We will find these solutions not through confrontation, but rather through an incredible amount of collaboration. From the moment each of us was sworn in tonight, we fail if we allow ourselves to be too... Sorry. We fail if we allow ourselves to be defined exclusively as right-leaning or left-leaning. You're neither a conservative nor a progressive councillor. You are a City of London councillor now. For my part as mayor, I pledge to respect that while my voice is an important one, it is not the only one. Each of my 14 colleagues have been sent to City Hall as representatives of thousands and thousands of Londoners, each with their own ideas and their own beliefs on how to address the most pressing issues facing our city. While we are aligned on those issues, I know council colleagues also share with me the conviction that ours is a city with immense opportunities. I know you share with me the belief that this council has the immense capacity to meet and conquer the challenges before us. Again, this will be done by way of collaboration, not confrontation. In that same spirit, we must collaborate and tap the resources of our tremendously skilled and diligent staff, led by City Manager Lynne Livingston and members of the senior leadership team. They are the absolute best at what they do. Their commitment to the city's well-being is undeniable, and their devotion to Londoners is unwavering. Similarly, our willingness to collaborate must extend beyond the walls of City Hall. I think of partnerships with members of parliament, members of provincial parliament. At their core, they are people, not partisans. They are Londoners who believe in our city and its people. I also envision this council developing deeper and more meaningful relationships with agencies, not-for-profits, and other local organizations. In many ways, they have modeled the type of collaboration that we need to adopt as part of council's DNA. And above all else, and most importantly, we must commit to collaborating with our constituents, Londoners, the same Londoners we engaged with each and every day for multiple months during our respective campaigns. If we want this city to thrive, if we want our democracy to succeed, this must not be an exercise conducted once every four years. It must be undertaken on a daily basis. Because I fundamentally believe that politics and municipal government, when done with humility, when done with honor, when done with compassion and commitment, is a force for good in our community. But it cannot be done in isolation from our communities. That collaboration is absolutely vital. When we do this, when we do this, it's not a matter of believing we can achieve great things. It's an exercise in reminding ourselves that we've already accomplished things when we've worked together. And I'll give some examples. This previous council that some of us were a part of, we declared a climate emergency, unanimously approved the Climate Emergency Action Plan, and set a community-wide plan and target to achieve net-zero emissions by 2050 and improve the resilience to climate change impacts. We did that together. That same council made historic and unprecedented investments into housing, more than any other council in London's history, committed $90 million to a series of initiatives while approving a roadmap to 3,000 affordable units. We did that together. In the face of unspeakable hatred, that same council was united in its efforts to eradicate racism, hate, and oppression in all of its forms. That council initiated systemic change, creating an entire anti-racism and anti-oppression division at the City of London. That council approved an action plan to disrupt Islamophobia that is hailed by many as one of the strongest plans in Canada. And that council also created an anti-racism and anti-oppression framework which will embed the principles of equity and inclusion in all aspects of our municipal work. These are but a few examples of what can be achieved when collaboration is prioritized over confrontation. And I am very grateful for the efforts of the previous council. Their efforts and their work has ensured we're not starting from scratch. We are further ahead, thanks to those achievements. But this is not about letting go about what was. It's about stepping into what is. Colleagues, it's an honor or a privilege to take this step with each of you on behalf of all Londoners. The work we do together over the next four years is perhaps the most important any of us will undertake in our professional lives. And I want to leave you with something that I often share on Remembrance Day, and we know Remembrance Week was just recently. When I speak to veterans, when I speak at events, and some of you will have heard me say this, I think about the tremendous, the tremendous privilege we have to serve in a democratic chamber, that we can walk into the halls, we can walk into City Hall, we can walk into the council chamber, we can walk in, we can cast votes, we can debate, we can agree, we can disagree, we can move motions. And we do that in a free society because of those who came before us, who sacrificed, who fought. At a time when democracy is under threat in parts of this world, we have this tremendous privilege to be thankful each and every time we walk into that chamber for those who have fought and have died, for us to have the privilege and distinction to serve in this office and to work on behalf of Londoners. And I want to challenge each and every one of us, every day, every time you walk into that council chamber, to think about that, those who sacrificed, those who continue to protect us around this world so that we can live and exercise our rights on behalf of Londoners in this free and democratic society that we call London, Ontario, and Canada. Thank you. Well, I'm going to run a meeting with a hot mic. That'll be very exciting for everybody. So, colleagues, you have the agenda before you. The first item is disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'd like to see if any colleagues have any disclosures of pecuniary interest that they need to disclose at this time. Okay. We move on to the appointment of a deputy mayor. So I'm looking for a motion with respect to the appointment of a deputy mayor. I understand councillor Hillier is willing to move such a motion, and I'm willing to second the motion. Okay, I'm going to read the motion. Then on the recommendation of the mayor, the appointment of councillor Sean Lewis as deputy mayor for the City of London for a term commencing on November 15th, 2022, and ending on... November 14th, 2026, to carry out such responsibilities as set out and provided for in the council policy, appointment of a deputy mayor and the council procedure bylaw be approved. Would anybody like to speak to this motion? I would like to speak to this motion, and since I'm the chair, I'm going to pass the chair off to perhaps councillor Hopkins. Would you be willing to take the chair for me? Time me. I, colleagues, I bring forward the nomination for councillor Sean Lewis, and there's two things I want to talk about with this nomination for a deputy mayor. And the first is something that I think we, you know, I talked about in my inaugural address about issues of equity and inclusion. I want us to remember that there was a time when the mayor of the City of London would not issue a proclamation for the Pride Parade, and that it was a time when we would not raise the Pride flag, and there were times when members of this elected body would not even march in Pride parades. And now I have the distinct honor and privilege of nominating someone for deputy mayor who is a member of that community, and I think we have come very far in our community, and we have so much farther to go. I also want to say that Sean has been a strong, strong voice for the East End of our city. And it has been many decades, many decades, since either a mayor or deputy mayor has come from the East End of our city. Sean has lived in that part of our city for over 20 years. I myself have lived in the North, in the West, and some of the areas in the middle. I see Melanie nodding in all the places we've lived, but not the East End. And I think that this is an incredibly important part of our community that has such potential to grow and expand as we work through the challenges ahead. And Sean not only has that life experience in the East End, but he also has extensive experience, not just on council, but previously serving as an elected councillor. He worked for the constituents of London as a representative in MP Irene Matheson's office. He served on all five of our standing committees. He's represented council on the Argyle BIA, Tourism London, London Public Library, and London Housing Boards. His diversity, his perspective, and his experience, I think, will be an asset to all of us in this role as deputy mayor, and I'm proud to nominate him today. Okay, councillor Hopkins is returning the chair to me. And anybody else want to speak to this nomination? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of this nomination of councillor Lewis as deputy mayor? All right. Oh, we got one down. The next one is a recommendation for budget chair. I'm going to look for a motion with respect to the appointment of a budget chair, and I believe councillor Stevenson, yes, you're willing to make that motion? I'm willing to second that. And once again, I'd like to speak to the motion. So councillor Hopkins, I'm going to turn the chair over to you. I bring forward the nomination of councillor Elizabeth Palloza for budget chair, a role that I also had the distinct honor and privilege of serving. Councillor Palloza represents the South End of the city and other area I've not lived in. She has tremendous experience. She has a track record of delivering on results for Londoners, and she has represented this community with great conviction, with great respect for diversity and inclusion. As someone myself who served as budget chair for six years, I think that experience of carrying on in the position is important. When I was appointed deputy mayor, councillor Palloza was appointed by Mayor Holder to conclude the next 18 months of budget chair work. We have an incredible amount of work ahead. We have a multi-year budget to finish, and we have another multi-year budget to develop. It is going to be an exceptional challenge for us to navigate the challenges we have within the limited resources that this municipality has at its disposal. It will require innovation, it will require collaboration, and it will require someone who knows the budget process well and can carry this forward. I nominate Elizabeth because I believe it's important to have stability in this role. I think we need her diverse perspective in the role, and I'm asking for your support today to support councillor Elizabeth Palloza for budget chair, and that nomination is for the same term as I outlined for deputy mayor. Those are my comments, and I'll go back to you. Okay, so I have the chair, and I'll see if anybody else would like to speak to this You know, if every council meeting went this way, we'd be done very quick. I'm the one slowing it down. With that, then, I'm going to call the vote to appoint councillor Palloza as our council budget chair. All those in favor? Now, all of you who are here in the audience today probably don't get to see what happens at a council meeting, but now that we've done those two things, we do redo them again three times, because we have to approve the bylaws for a first, second, and third reading for each of those appointments. So first, could I have a motion for the first reading of Bill Number One, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of this council meeting that was held on the 15th day of November 2022? Moved by councillor Hopkins, seconded by councillor, we'll go with Lewis. All those in favor of the first reading of Bill Number One?
That motion carries.
Okay. Second reading of the same bill. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Lehman and councillor Van Mirbergen. Second reading, there is the possibility for debate. Anybody want to discuss Bill Number One, which is just ratifying the proceedings of the meeting today? No? Okay. We'll vote on Bill Number One for second reading. All those in favor?
That motion carries.
Okay. Third reading of Bill Number One, mover and a seconder. I'll look this way this time. Councillor Stevenson and councillor Cuddy, first moved and seconded. There is no debate on third reading. All those in favor for a third reading of this bill?
That motion carries.
Okay. Bill Number Two. Could I please have a motion for the first reading of Bill Number Two, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor for the City of London and to repeal bylaw number A-2802-221, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy mayor as selected by the mayor for the City of London? So essentially approving councillor Lewis's bylaw and repealing mine. First reading, I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Hillier, councillor Lehman, moved and seconded. No debate on first reading. All those in favor?
That motion carries.
Second reading of the same bylaw. Councillor Ferrera, councillor Ramon, there is debate on second reading. Anybody want to discuss this bylaw? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor?
That motion carries.
Third reading of the same bylaw. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Priville and councillor Cuddy. All those in favor?
That motion carries.
Congratulations, councillor Lewis. I'll say there is not a bylaw for the budget chair appointment. It's by resolution, so we don't need to do that. That was actually confirmed in the first bill. But I'll add my congratulations to councillor Elizabeth Palloza again on that appointment. With that, and the most exciting part of any municipal council meeting, I have adjournment on the list next. So could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, first meeting, councillor Lewis and councillor Stevenson, Stevens, excuse me. All those in favor of adjournment? You guys are making this funny.
That motion carries.
All right, we're adjourned. Can I have the mic back? If you liked that, you can do this regularly, a couple of times a month, if you want to come to City Council viewing chambers and watch that excitement on a regular basis. There's a lot more actual work that we do than this, but always the public is more than welcome to join us at municipal council meetings, and I'd encourage you to do so. Back to the clerk.
I would now like to invite the colour guard to enter the stage and to escort the council from the room. Once council has left the room, you are all invited to join the council in adjoining rooms. room for a reception. I invite all of you to stand if you are able. Distinguished guests, from 2022 to 2026 Municipal Council.
Looking for all kinds of animal matter and plant matter to eat because, in fact, raccoons are omnivores. By looking at this raccoon skull, you can see that they are well-equipped to catch and kill prey using their canine teeth, which are otherwise called fangs. Raccoons are typically nocturnal animals, so it was really quite a treat to be able to see this one active during the day. When you see the eyes looking straight at you, you can see they've got a black mask over them. This helps them to blend in so that their eyes aren't obvious to prey, or to predators for that matter. Here's a skull showing clearly how big the eye sockets are. They help them to see at night. So it was really neat to be able to watch that raccoon just take care of business as though it didn't notice I was there. And it did see me, but it didn't feel threatened. I was across the river from it. It was in an area where there were rapids, so it didn't hear me if I was rustling around with my camera equipment. But on the main trail, which I'm now back on, there were some people that were walking along, talking to one another. As soon as it heard that, it took off. Now, I continued along this trail in the same direction as those people. And after they passed through, the raccoon came back out to forage some more. So you can really tell that some of these animals around here, they're not acclimatized to people, the presence of people. If we, if we seem to present a low risk of threat, like we walk quietly, we don't seem to approach, they carry on. But when they hear human voices, they often will take off and seek shelter. Those large turtles, those three, last three that I showed, are the eastern spiny softshell turtles. And that seems to be their favorite basking spot since I found them here before. They're raising their body temperature because their heat typically comes from the external environment, so they're taking in the sun's warm rays in order to warm up their bodies. I just finished recording a branch moving through the water. And once you start following things like that, that don't seem to make sense, there's not a current really strong enough to move a branch. I had a closer look, and of course, I have seen this animal in this area before. It was a muskrat. It was bringing home some food for the day. And so we watched it as it was traveling along with that branch of green leaves entering its riverbank den. So it's very easy to be able to track wildlife once you kind of know what patterns to look for. Just a short while ago, I was videoing with my other camera a fawn. Other than the one that I saw that was just an hour old, that I had shown in, shown in the previous video, I haven't seen any, but I saw a doe. And I videoed her. And it wasn't long after, I continued on my travels, that I saw a fawn. And it was just a break in the pattern, recognizing deer ears, that I started videoing the fawn. Now, it didn't stay put for very long because then I was hoping to get out this camera here that does a better job of zooming. And it didn't stick around for that. So anyway, lots of really cool things out here this morning. I'm holding this up towards the trees in the hopes that the microphone picks up the sound. It sort of sounds like raindrops. So now that you've had a chance to perhaps hear that, it's not raindrops at all. It is drops. It's droppings from caterpillars in the trees above that are eating the leaves. And we can hear their excrement hitting the leaves, and it sounds like raindrops. Well, folks, that's a wrap for this week on Hiking with Kathleen. Thanks so much for joining me. If you liked this video, please click like. If you would like to see more content like this, please consider subscribing. I'd love to have you along for my weekly outings to the woods, to the beach, to the camping experience. However it is that we take you along, we want to make sure that you don't miss an episode. I'll see you next week. Bye for now. Welcome to Hiking with Kathleen. I often observe whitetail deer in the woods on my morning hikes, but grooming each other? Not very often. It only happens when they're at peace, not frightened or stressed. It serves to maintain a bond between herd members, like a doe and her fawns. Notice the size difference with the mother on the right and not currently in the mood for reciprocation. Throw in some noise, like barking dogs, and deer become stressed and flee. Check out the channel for more nature videos.
Our mission statement here at Salt Haven is to help sick, injured, or orphaned wildlife to the degree that they get back into the wild and into their natural habitat. And to help people understand through our education programs, the plight of Canadian wildlife. We don't want to just educate people. We want to inspire them to want to make a difference. And I think that's where it all comes together, is when people don't feel like they have to do it, but they want to.
So these are fledglings cedar waxwings. Unfortunately, this was an abduction. What we mean by that is fledglings stay on the ground for about five days, working their pectoral muscles, while mom and dad feed them. However, some people do think that they need help, or are unsure about the situation, so they do pick them up. Having a kind heart, of course, when really mom and dad are secretly there all along. So they were brought to Salt Haven as an abduction. We couldn't take them back in this circumstance, so we are feeding them. Cedar waxwings love berries. That's their primary diet. Cedar waxwings are very family-oriented. When they're actually on a branch together, they will pass berries to the last one and continue down the line, which is really cute. We don't see too many of them, but when we do, it's kind of a special treat. They get fed every 30 minutes. And they will overeat, so with the right training, as what Maddie's doing, she knows the amount to feed them. And then they are all nice and happy and full, and then they go back into their enclosure for another 30 minutes, and then get ready for the next feeding. So these are barn swallows. They came to us as nestlings, so they are fully fledged. And with barn swallows, they eat while flying. So sometimes it's very difficult to get them to eat, so we do have to tweezer-feed them sometimes right through. Barn swallows are endangered here in Ontario, which is quite sad, so we don't see too many of them, just like the cedar waxwings. But when we do, it's very nice, and we try and train them to eat as best as possible. They're really neat flyers. They fly kind of in a swooping motion, and they're the only bird that can actually move all the way around as a 180 when flying. They're very good flyers. We're training them to find food on their own, because they are at a stage where they will be able to. We usually feed from one dish, and then leave the other dish full of mealworms, so that they know that they are able to go and get that dish whenever they feel they want to. Barn swallows eat up to 1,000 mealworms a day, or 1,000 bugs a day. So of course, we don't have the facility to have 1,000 mealworms for them a day, but that just shows how quick their metabolism is, and how fast they eat. We are going to be upgrading them into a bigger enclosure very soon, so they can work their pectoral muscles to fly and get stronger. And we are cautiously optimistic on their release. We always say cautiously optimistic, because with wildlife, it is hard to tell sometimes. Okay, I'm just gonna get some milk for him. This is a female cardinal. She was hit by a car, unfortunately collided with a car. She has some severe head trauma, and we are still working with that head trauma. She came to us about two weeks ago now. But we do see small improvements, so we are working with her. She isn't eating on her own. We are thinking that's due to the head trauma. They sometimes have a hard time bending down or noticing food, because they're just trying to use all that energy to stand and use their vital organs, and not actually focusing on hunting for food. She is getting medications to reduce any swelling in the brain, as well as any nerve impingements, or any inflammation around the nerves or spine. And she is also getting laser therapy and homeopathic meds, thanks to Dr. Steve at Pathways Holistic Pet Care. So she is getting the works, and we're hoping to see some improvements, maybe in the next three to five days. Maddie's holding her in a proper grip that we use here at Salt Haven, and taking her time with feeding her those mealworms, making sure that it goes further down into her throat, so that she realizes that she is swallowing or getting food into her mouth. She does have a slight head tilt, and this could turn into torticolis, which we are a little concerned about, but we will just watch that and make sure that that doesn't get to that point. If it does turn into torticolis, we'll take further actions to do that. But so far, she is maintaining her situation, which is a good sign. And she's gaining weight, too, which is also a good sign. She's actually a very good patient, and what I mean by that is she's actually opening her mouth for the food. Usually cardinals, sparrows, grosbeaks with a beak, as you're seeing. They never open it, because it's so strong, but she's actually willing to open her beak for us and take that food. So she's smart enough to know to open that, or to open her beak for the food, which is really amazing, that she's figured that out in such a smart, or a small time. But that is usually her stance after food. As you can see, the head trauma, she may be flipping around during, when she's stressed, having a hard time balancing. So we try and keep the stress to a minimum. This is a bank swallow who has a caracoid fracture, which in human bones is a collarbone fracture. So what we have to do in this circumstance is do a body wrap, so the wrap goes around the wing and also around the body, to stabilize the caracoid, or the collarbone. So he's had this on for about three days now, and it does have to stay on for about five. Once it stays on for about five days, then we take it off, we do some physio with the wing, and then it goes back on for another five days. The only issue we're having with the body wrap in him is, he's not eating. He's a little bit out of it, a little shocky, and a little dehydrated, so we are fighting with that a little bit. With body wraps, you have to be very careful and cautious, because when you're wrapping it around the body, you have to make sure that it's above the legs, but also below the crop, because the crop is the first place the food goes to digest. So it is quite kind of a delicate situation. And also, in this delicate situation, as you can see, Maddie is gently opening the beak to force feed. Their beaks are very flexible and malleable, and one wrong move can fracture the beak, so you have to be very, very cautious when doing this. He does stand, he does move around, he obviously can't fly right now due to that fracture. And we do think the only reason he's not eating, on top of him being slightly dehydrated and a little shocky, is when he gets older, just like the barn swallows, they do eat while in flight. So he's not realizing that he needs to eat out of a dish. And that is going to be hard for him, because he is an adult, and a first-year fully fledged, so he already knows to eat in mid-flight. So we're hoping in this next two days, we can take off the body wrap, and do some physio, and really show, and get some improvement, and show that there's some healing process and some callousing there. A callus there on the caracoid fracture. If there isn't any callus, that's not a good sign. That means that the bone is healing incorrectly. And on a bird this small, it's definitely possible, because the bones are so tiny, it's hard to line them up properly. Not that we go in blind, but it is quite difficult to line those bones up properly.
The parents can train the babies like no rehabber can. They teach them all about predators, where food is, what food is, and so on. And through the next couple of weeks, those babies are taught in such a way that they can survive in the environment. We can't even do that as effective. Mom's the word there. So wherever possible, we want people to get those babies back with mom. If they're injured, if there's flies around them, that kind of thing, yep, they need to be, they need to be brought in and tended to. But other than that, nature usually takes care of itself.
This program is brought to you by the following sponsors. Jack 1023, playing what we want. This is Rogers TV.
Last year, we decided that we would explore the possibility of bees at Salt Haven. We have beautiful gardens here. Back about 25 years ago, this whole area was just a big tobacco farm, dust-blown tobacco farm. And a gentleman by the name of Paul Van der Croft, who was the original homesteader here, and he had a degree in horticulture from Holland. And so he set about planting these beautiful trees that we have here, and just turning this into a garden of Eden, literally. It was, it's just amazing. There's plants of every description here. We have Kentucky coffee bean trees, we have Scandinavian larches, as well as the standard, you know, sugar maple trees. We have pyramidal oaks, European beech trees, you name it, it's here. And so he really developed this property in such a way that we are reaping the rewards of that now. And so with all of that, we had these pollinator flowers that we thought, you know, this is, if any, there was any place that was ripe for beekeeping, this would be it.
So yeah, I normally don't do a honey harvest on first-year beehives, bee colonies, but the ones at Salt Haven have done so well, that I am going to do a honey harvest this year, because they have filled these two supers completely with honey. And it's capped honey, which means it's ready. So I'm going to do this honey harvest, and then of course, I always make sure that there's enough for them to overwinter. So I put on something called an Quebec escape, which is basically like a maze. And so when I put it on, I put it right here, they can go down, they go through there, they can figure it out, but then it's harder for them to figure out how to get back up. So the idea is, hopefully, if it worked, I see some sneaking back in through here, but if it worked, hopefully, there won't be very many bees here, and it will be much easier to take the honey. So that is, that is basically all I do in order to get the bees out of the honey super, is put the Quebec escape. And I do that a day, or sometimes two days before I do a honey harvest. So the first box is the most recent one I put on, so you wouldn't expect much honey here, although there is some. So there are some bees here, but there's always a few. My hope is by the time I get this into the car, into my van, that they have mostly left, because worker bees can't survive outside of their colony. So if I drive away with them, and they have not rejoined their colony, then they will not have very, the rest of their life won't be very long. So this is the second one that did really well. Lots of things live with, in a bee colony, so you can see this, I don't know if you can see it, I can see this earwig, which is completely harmless, just gross. And we will get a few wasp visitors, but hopefully not too many. So these bees, that one was already pretty heavy, so they have already started filling up a third box, which is pretty amazing. And you can see, this is a, this broken one, you can see it was fully capped. So they'll be filling the honeycomb with nectar, and it's really hot inside a beehive, so when, once a certain percentage of the water evaporates from the nectar, that's when they cap it, because that's honey. So they have collected a lot of honey here. So when I usually check a beehive, I don't, I don't check inside the honey supers, which is what the smaller boxes are called, because I just base it on feel, to know if they have very much honey in there. What I'm interested in for a usual bee check, hive check, is to know what's going on in what's called the brood box, which is the box at the bottom here. And that's because, that's where the queen is, and you want to know if the queen is, for one thing, laying eggs, if there's larvae, if you're going to have a decent population of bees, if she's healthy, if she's alive, that's really important. And also, unfortunately, honeybees have a lot of pests and pathogens, and most of pests and pathogens will be most prominent, or are pests and pathogens of the brood. So that's why, what really matters is what's going on in the brood box. So I just give them a little bit of smoke. It just makes them go down and start eating honey. So all of this is propo- well, the stuff that's especially red is propolis, and they gather that from evergreen trees that have sap, and they make it into like a glue. But there's been some studies that have shown that they use it, because it also has antibiotic qualities, so they might use it to self-medicate. So this is honey. They are getting ready for the winter by putting honey in their brood box. When I check the brood box, what I'm most interested in is to see eggs, a larvae, or capped brood. This time of year, the population of honeybees naturally goes down, they're getting ready for winter. Honeybees don't hibernate. They don't hibernate, but they do have things they do in the winter to survive it. So they form a cluster around the queen, and they keep their cluster and the queen very warm. So it should be 36 degrees Celsius inside a beehive around the queen at all times. So this is capped brood. You can see there's not, there's not a ton of it. So I do see some eggs, which means there is a laying queen. And actually, when it comes to the queen, if I see eggs, I usually don't look specifically for the queen, because if there are eggs, that means there's a laying queen, unless sometimes you see like a whole bunch of eggs in one, which means there's a laying worker and a laying worker bee. The bee, the bees that are produced from that will be male bees, and that's not very helpful for the hive right now, so that would be a problem. But I see one egg right at the bottom of each of these cells, which is just perfect, what you want to see. This is, so this is a worker, and this is a drone. So they're bigger. And their bottoms are like blunt, whereas the workers come to a point. And you can also see here, some of them have pollen. So they pack in the pollen this time of year as well, because that's really important for feeding the larvae. And the queen will start laying again in February or certainly March. And so they need to have pollen from last year in order to start feeding the new larvae that they'll have. So that's why they're still packing in the pollen. But their most important food for the winter will be their own honey. This time of year, beekeepers do get very concerned about mites. Mite is probably the number one pest. And they carry viruses. So that's really why they're dangerous, is because they carry viruses that can go from bee colony to bee colony and really devastate them. So mites only came to the continent in the 80s. Canada a little later than the United States. And yet now, they probably infect almost 100% of all bee colonies managed and ones that have gone feral in North America. So yeah, it's a very big concern of beekeepers. Because we're always talking and debating what to do about mites. If you ever go to a beekeeping conference, that is one of the number-one discussions. The really important part of beekeeping is to make sure that they aren't getting overwhelmed by the pests and pathogens. So there's a lot of interest in people becoming beekeepers. And one of the important things to know is they're not wild animals. They've been living with humans for a long time, thousands of years, as part of agricultural systems. And they do have pests and pathogens. Some of those pests and pathogens have been spread by humans, by our practices with beekeeping. So it is our responsibility to have some sort of plan for what to do, especially those mites. All sorts of insects love and animals love honey. So I'm going to take out a frame of honey. So you can see here, all capped. This is great, because if it's partly capped and then partly it's open nectar, I wouldn't really extract from that, because the water content of the honey will then be too high, and it will ferment. So this is like really ideal. So I'm going to take this honey away. I have an extractor at home. So I have, my laundry room also doubles as a honey house. So I have an extractor. And so what I'm going to do is take this, you have to cut off the capping somehow. So I just use a knife. But there's all sorts of little tools you can get to help you with that. And then I put it in the extractor. I can fit, I believe, 20 frames in it. It like goes around really, really fast, and all the honey kind of whips out of it. And then there's a, like kind of faucet, and I open that up, and the honey just flows right into a container. And then I strain it, so strain it through a very fine sieve. And then I have honey, and I bottle it up, and that's, that's the process. So I keep the honey raw, so I don't pasteurize it or heat it. I believe there's health benefits to raw honey. There's a lot of antibacterial properties, and it doesn't go bad, and it's really great and beautiful. And so I don't heat it in any way. So when you, you have to cut off the caps, and then the honey is just right there. And it's amazing how it just, it's just so perfect, and it just flows out. For one worker bee, her life's work is as a forager, will contribute to roughly, on average, about 1/12 of a teaspoon of finished honey. So this represents a lot of bees' work. And so I think honey is a very, very special food product because of that, something people should enjoy and savor. And I think one of the ways to do that is to support small-scale beekeepers and ask them about how they beekeep, ask them about their practices. Yeah, and just support the work that they do.
We're aware of, you know, native bees and, you know, the imports from Europe that we commonly refer to as honeybees. But there is more than enough to go around here. Oh my gosh, this place is just on fire with blossoms every year. And so we're not crowding out anybody. And we feel that there is a benefit here, especially because of the pollinator flowers that we have. And we have two large fields, about 15 acres of fields here that have alfalfa in them with those little blue flowers. The bees are all, and we have goldenrod along the creek. And well, all the flowers in the gardens here, too. So yeah, the bees have been a real interesting experience. We've learned an awful lot from them. They're incredible, just little, tiny, little creatures with brains, you know? That they're very smart, intelligent, and they know what they're doing.
Releases are kind of a fun experience for everyone, especially if you've been here for a while and you kind of get to see the whole treatment sequence. So from admission, you see them usually fairly debilitated. And then getting to watch that process to the release day, it's kind of almost surreal when you get to watch it and knowing that you helped them along in that way.
So we're here today releasing a long-eared owl. And it came to us about a month ago. Got hit by a car, not too far from here, actually. And he had some severe muscle damage. We gave him the whole gauntlet. We did laser therapy, homeopathy, and he responded pretty well. So he's ready to go. He's in good shape, he's been eating really well. He flies good. We test-flued him on a Creance line, no problem. So this is his home turf here, and we're going to release him. It's late in the afternoon, so it's perfect. All right, here we go. No problem there. Boy, he negotiated those trees really good, didn't he?
Call the Rogers TV Viewer Response Line, email us, or connect with us on social media.
At St. John Ambulance, we're all about community. We teach lifesaving skills and provide community support through our volunteer services. All St. John Ambulance product sales and training registrations support these important services. Volunteer, donate, or enroll in a program today so we can continue to have an impact on our community. Visit sja.cja.org.